Good evening, calling to order city council meeting of June 21st, 2022 here at City Hall. The clerk, please take the roll.
Mayor for Tim Jonathan Rosen. Councilmember Brendan Elwood. Councilmember Alan Gotthoff. Councilmember Jo- Park Jocelyn.
Present.
Councilmember Heather Cullen. Councilmember Ross Lomback.
Here.
Councilmember Mary Miller. All are present with the exception of Councilmember Elwood and Miller, your honor.
Thank you. The clerk, please lead us in the flag salute. Thank you. I understand that before we move to consent agenda, I have a motion.
Yes, I move to demand to committee A B twenty-two dash zero seven seven ordinance adopting N B M C eight point four-four needle exchange program prohibited. That was postponed on June 7th to tonight's meeting.
Second. Ms. Cullen, did you want to explain what's going on there?
So we have a needle exchange program that is happening by the train depot. And we didn't feel exactly comfortable with the situation, so we're working with the King County Board of Health and looking into, and also with the rest of our council members into ways to properly deal with.
Any questions from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries it is unanimous. Thank you. Consent agenda, we have just three items on the consent agenda, minutes, payroll and checks. Can I get a motion?
No moved.
You, second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries it is unanimous. Citizens comments. At this time, if you would like to comment on an item not on tonight's agenda, we would invite you to come forward if you're here in council chambers or indicate in the chat box or by star nine if you have joined us virtually. I'll start with those in chambers first and then move to virtual participants. Again, this is, this is the time if the item's not on the agenda. We do have two public hearing continuances a little later and you'll be offered the opportunity to speak during that if you're here for one of those items. Anybody here in the audience that is to speak? So just step up. Being anyone, may I read it? Do we have anyone online?
We do. Megan Lynn would like to speak.
Again, you may unmute. You have three minutes. Please start with your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry, actually, I'm here to speak on item four on the main agenda, so maybe I should.
We're not quite hearing you, Megan.
Um, sorry, I don't know why I did this. Can you hear me now?
Hear you now, fine, thank you.
And I'm sorry, I'm actually here to speak on item four on the main agenda, so perhaps I should wait until that, that portion of, of the meeting?
It'd be fine, thank you. Anyone else?
No one else.
All right, thank you very much. With that, we will move on to commission and committee reports. Ms. Miller is not here. Would another member of the Community and Economic Development mission or committee wish to tell us what happened there? What else do we have? One of you must.
That's me. I'm the lone providing member and I came unprepared to speak to this status of the Community and Economic Development.
There you go. That's fine.
There you go.
We'll, we'll move on from there, that's.
That makes it easy. Today's meeting earlier today was canceled, your honor.
Finance and administration. Likewise, Mr. Elwood is not with us tonight. We have another F and A meeting.
Yeah, like to drew the short straw, I guess, is what they call it. So the Finance Administration Committee did meet June 7th, four o'clock in the adjournment room. Paul Ribery gave us a presentation on a North Bend storage project he is looking forward. We discussed the U L I D number seven bond reforming ordinance, which is on tonight's agenda. And we got a quick timeline discussion on RFP for financial software. Rousing that conversation was.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Ms. Cullen.
Public health and safety, we met on June 14th at 4:00 P. M. In the City Hall adjournment room. We discussed with Seattle King County Department of Health Director Worsom, Professor Sarah Glick from University of Washington and Brad Fingood about needle exchanges. Second thing on our agenda was a fire update by Chief Clark. Ben Lane will become the new chief starting in November 2022 after Chief Clark retires. And Chief Clark supports a ban on aerial fireworks. Number three was we had no police update this month. Number four, we had a discussion on banning aerial fireworks. Approved by council, it would not go into effect until summer 2023. We are currently one of three of the only cities in King County that doesn't have a ban. Those cities are North Bend, Mercer Island, and Enham Clark. We discussed an ordinance amending N B M C Chapter 10 regarding speed limit reduction on Olch and North Bend Way.
Thank you. Transportation and Public Works, Mr. Lomback.
Thank you. We last met on the 24th of May at, and we, in the meeting room. Many of the items that we had in the discussion on that docket were covered in the last meeting, including sidewalk repair projects and like other items that were on the meeting was a update from Don DeBerg on a change order for the wastewater treatment plant. He's one improvement which included some good news, a $105,000 savings. Project mandated that that's the only time he's allowed to speak is when he brings us savings going forward. We also discussed a professional services contract with U C C for telemetry needs for the wastewater treatment plant and sanitary sewer system. We talked a little bit about an engineering services contract with Parametrics for Ribery Creek Flood Risk Reduction Program with Tom Moore. And I'm also informed us about a motion on track with Intralight for street lighting becoming to downtown sidewalk project. And we will be meeting next Tuesday in the meeting room once again at four. Thank you, your honor.
Thank you. Oh, Tim Rosen.
Met here, uh, May 24th here at seven o'clock and just had two items on our agenda. A presentation from Si View, Alton Park District and see some of the plans and things they have in store for us in the future. Talked a little bit for aquatic center, flowing pool, and we discussed the needle exchange program which is continuing and we'll get some resolution, I think, on that in very near future. That's all, your honor.
Side Fire Rescue Board, Mr.
Thank you. The Side Fire Rescue Board had a regular board meeting on June 9th. We started with public comment and then moved on to the recognition of two retirees. And Chief Dave McDaniel and the, and Rick Pennell. Retiring and they were given a plaque with opportunity to speak at the meeting. We then went on to part of the you know, the subcommittee recommendation on being the next fire chief and as a little council person said, Chief Ben Lane was after several conversations was nominated to become the next fire chief. The board moved for me and the vice chair to begin negotiations with him, get a contract set up for him. Will take over sometime around November is the evening of the end of the year. Fire chief did his briefing as usual and really just talked about probably have seen throughout a bunch of promotional updates, firefighters and moved up positive. And then a little conversation was a parent town hall, mental danger awareness that I and chief Ryan Anderson participated in a panel on hall that represented by Schreier. Well, a little bit of conversation about the Pulse Point app that's out there and how we're involved with that. That was all.
You. Congratulations to you chief and big person.
Looking forward to them.
Mission reports stemming.
Thank you. The planning commission met on June 9th. At that meeting, the Economic Development Manager Mark Knoll provided the commissioners with an overview of the scope of work for the Economic Development Action Plan. Commissioners also viewed and discussed part of a webinar on regional housing affordability crisis, including factors involved in increasing housing costs, market trends, what buyers can afford in relation to income. At their next meeting, June 23rd, commissioners will continue watching and discussing, discussing additional portions of that webinar. Considerations of issues that will be pertinent to the pending update to our housing element as part of the city's broader 2024 comprehensive plan amendment. Parks Commission met on June 15th and reviewed and provided feedback on draft park survey that staff will post in July for public feedback on park and trail facility planning. Inform the update of the parks element of the comprehensive plan. Our commission also viewed and provided feedback on initial amendments to the parks element and discuss an outreach strategy for the parks element update, which will include a parks element page on the city website, hosting a booth at two upcoming farmers markets, make public workshop plan for September. Our commission will next meet on July 27th and will review preliminary survey feedback and discuss draft updates to the parks element. Economic Development Commission met May 24th. Commissioners reviewed and discussed the outcomes of the April workshop that included prioritizing strategies outlined in previous plans and highlighting geographic areas of focus for the upcoming Economic Development Action Plan. Commissioners also provided feedback on the business outreach meeting survey. Commission will next meet July 28th and will meet with Place in Maine, the consultant assisting with the city on its Economic Development Action Plan. Thank you.
Go on to regional reports.
King County Board of Health met on June 16th, 16th at one o'clock via Zoom. Some things on the agenda were they're working on preventing lead poisoning in children, adding future board members that are not elected officials. Duchin discussed long COVID symptoms are varied but include fatigue, sleep problems, fever, G I, respiratory and heart problems, kidney damage, blood clots, brain fog, anxiety and depression. Uh, the FDA has approved COVID vaccines for children six months to five years old. Can get these vaccines from their primary care providers. However, Snoqualmie Valley Hospital is offering the vaccines with a drive-through service. It will need two doses to get Moderna and three doses of Pfizer. Monkeypox, there are currently 65 cases in the United States and so far only in 18 states. Globally, there are 600 cases. King County has one confirmed case and one probable case. King County case was from a traveler that had returned from Canada. Monkeypox is transmitted via skin to skin. The outbreak is among gay and bisexual men or men who have sex with men. It presents with flu-like symptoms and then get rashes or sores. They are contagious until fully healed, usually about two to three weeks. And of note, syphilis is at an all-time high and can
The Snoqualmie Watershed Forum met May 18th. Just a brief reminder, the forum is a partnership of elected officials, citizens and representatives from conservation organizations supporting salmon recovery and ecological health in the Snoqualmie South Forks Sky Comish watersheds within the King County portion. Water resource inventory area seven. This patient offers an ongoing opportunity to collaborate in support of science, work to plan and fund protection and restoration actions in our areas. During the meeting, there were project and program updates, an action involving not just weed removal there in Duval and Lake Rasmussen. All city flood plain removal along these 700 feet of the Oath River Nation. There was acceptance by the forum of grants to help fund the forum staff. And then recommendations for allocation of funding similarly were approved by the body. There was a presentation by Josh Kubo County on the salmon life history in the Snoqualmie River watershed and the adoption of an annual budget. Thank you.
Yeah. Anything from Peak, Mr. John Beck?
The Tom Cities Association met on June 8th and we discussed several topics, the most spirited debate was about the county coming forward with a expanded ask on the parks open space acquisition fund going to be renewing and they're looking to double it. So state posted the, most of the people that were in attendance were questioning the timing. Or, and county seems determined that they are going to move forward with it. Anyway, so that was also the last meeting for Deanna Dawson, who has served as chair for in years. And she will be taking a position as the new head of the Association of Washington Cities. She's been a good friend in North Bend and I hope that will continue as she moves on to her new role, your honor.
Hello, everybody there. A few things I thought I'd share with council that I think you'd be interested in and, and the audience as well. I guess of, well, first you mentioned Deanna Dawson and, and last role with C A. So now with A W C, A W C Annual Conference, which is all Washington cities. It is an organization members of cities of Washington. Annual conference is this week, starting, you know, actually tonight. I will be there starting tomorrow morning for the end of the week. It's down in Vancouver. Sessions include things like women of mental health professionals, climate action, range, middle housing options, perp fund use, like private partnerships and university partnering, cybersecurity and attacks, using lobbyists for desired legislative outcomes, among other topics. The King County Flood Control District Advisory Committee met on June 16th is different than the Wyron and sometimes can be confusing with that. It is two different jurisdictions. We reviewed and approved the minutes of the March 13th meeting where, among other items, Mayor Dana Ralph was elected chair and myself as vice chair for the term. We've reviewed the history background on the scope goals and programs district. Received a report by the executive director of the work and for the year. Our next meeting there will be, we stayed July 7th. Give that to your attention because we have a lot of funding support from the district. Finally, I'll also be attending this week, Puget Sound Regional Council Executive Board Meeting this Thursday, where one of the hot topics is expected to be a continued discussion of the city of Samamish ends to come back into compliance with G M A regulations. It was noted recently that the city of Samamish has not been eligible for funding three some years due to non-compliance. This resulted in millions of dollars of duties and infrastructure improvements. Know the council is eye on that since we likewise rely a lot, so our see. And that's all I have for you. With that, ready to move to the main agenda? Number four, your agenda is A B twenty-two dash zero seven eight. This is a continuance of a public hearing that we began a meeting. Ordinance forming Metal Brook U L I D or U L I D local improvement district. Mr. Regus is going to give a short update. We'll move to any further public comment. Getting the public comment, this is a hearing. Now, motion to begin operations with council and with Mr. Regus.
Mayor Rob, good evening, city council. As you said, I don't have a detailed staff report tonight compared to two weeks ago. Effort, so my update tonight will be short and sweet. Last few weeks, Puget Western has partnered with U L L C and improved the cost reimbursement agreement for street, street residential property owners who did not sign the petition for sewer. There's about 18 properties that qualify for this agreement. There are 68 parcels in the U L I D area, about 40 of those parcels signed petition. Ultimately, 28 not, 65% of U L I D area has petition for sewer at this time. Going back to that agreement that has recently added to the city, this would be an option for those, some of 18 property owners. If city attorney can speak more to it myself, doesn't property owner is to sign that agreement. If Western view that U L I D moves forward, they sign that they do not develop their property and they do not move their property, then no amount of money would be due. Quick reminder that the sewer system is consistent with cities, 2017 sewer and so, and which is moved by a state O G and state system with cities come, so allow some commercial property developers to pay down the debt of a large $40 million wastewater treatment. So it doesn't eat cities' general fund. You're sure you don't have to pay sewer rates as well, so we do want some G F Cs coming to the treatment. This will help. Uh, the U L I D is certainly consistent with our zoning map, actual zoning over there. The U L I D is better for the environment. But the city's missions and its mission statement is to build essential infrastructure. Finally, the majority of the property owners by area already wanted sewer before the inner agreement was put forth, I turn it to you. City staff station is to move this lid forward. Mike, if you want to share a quick three seconds or minute on what the agreement is and how that would have.
I want to be clear first, council, that I'm not speaking for either Puget Western or Peak View. I, I was provided yesterday a copy of the revised agreement as Mark indicated. Puget Western and, and Peak View representatives met with some of the other single-family residential property owners and revised the agreement. Believe Wendy Miller is here to speak tonight. As I read the agreement, it is a substantial improvement from the perspective of residential property owners in that there is no reimbursement obligation whatsoever. Puget Western and Peak View will make the assessments obligated in this agreement to timely make them as required by the formation ordinance that council may adopt. If a property owner sits on his property and does nothing for 20 years, Puget Western and Peak View give the full assessments, property owner retains property. If, for example, and these are examples that were provided by Puget Western and Peak View, property owner sells his house five years after U L I D assessment rule. A new buyer then is responsible for the remaining 15 years worth. Seller, the original owner is not required to reimburse Puget Western and similarly, if someone say after 10 years redevelops one of those and that owner would be responsible for the remaining 10 years of not reimburse for the first.
Explain, staff. And at this time, we will continue with public comment. We'll again, we'll start here in chambers and then move online. If you would like to speak to this item number four about the Metal Brook sewer U L I D, I'll ask in a moment of names to be called for those who are here in the room and then we will move online. Indicate so in the chat box or by star nine if you've called in. Disruption.
Of information. This is the continuation of the public hearing, is that correct?
That is correct. Continuation. Um, Bree, you have the list? Just in the back, please. Move to you as well.
Uh, first on the list, we have Bob Whitley.
For the benefit of Bob and everyone following him, three minutes. You start with your name and address for the record.
Right, my name is Bob Whitley. My address is 1225 Northwest Ford Street. Um, I actually had, three minutes was going to be tricky for me. I had a fall right up here, but things are moving along so fast and changes with the central agreement for the U L I D are changing so fast, um. Um, I guess I just would want to say that, um, I obviously have a lot of questions about the agreement. Sounds like an improvement. Lots of details would definitely need to be checked out. Um, I personally, being assessed 160,000 to $200,000 or a portion of the sewer. I'm a single-family resident, putting two girls through college. So that's a big bill to get hit with, right? So got my intention. Um, I'm interested to see the agreement. I'm interested to learn more about it. I've just asked that it's not move ahead so fast that I have a chance to you know, consume it crockett. Got to have somebody, my side legally review it, obviously. Um, it's just, you know, be diligent. And I appreciate city council and city working at that done. I just want to make sure we're not going too fast, right? Make sure there's anything else I wanted to cover. Guess that, that's it for now. I definitely am interested in hearing more information on the agreement as long as, uh, continue to have these hearings, continue to be able to provide feedback. Hold off for now until I learn more.
Yes, we, we did not mention, but for, for your benefit and all, all those listening in, this is a, expected to be council's voice tonight, a first reading only. That means that it will be taken up yet again in, estimated to be about a month. So there's a, another month before council would make a final decision. So there should be more than that information. And likewise, even though the hearing is expected to end this evening, doesn't mean you can't continue to send in questions or comments.
I'm Evans.
My name is Tom Evans. My address is 1225 Northwest Street. I want to just back up a little bit. We've talked a lot about details of agreements and such. I want to back up just to the cost, just reiterate. Extremely high for a single-family residence. I think very unreasonably high. I think particularly so when you start to look through the SOVA report. There are numerous points where they highlight the limited amount of data available for assessment. Each time those are met, uh, the assumption is that it's negligible or unencumbered. Um, so those details have high significance to us. Um, I, I would like an answer to a question tonight, I'm hoping, is why it can't be carved out of, of the U L I D moving forward? That seems to be avoided consistently and I, and I'm not sure why the residential areas can't. Why the residential areas can't just be carved out? Is there very different stakeholders in this project? That is debt regardless of the terms. And. It's not fun to manage. No, when you I would love to say I'm going to be in my home for twenty years. That's a little hard to assume. Long timeframe to start making all these big assumptions. Residential properties are really the stakeholders that are being left with the gamble. Everyone else. Get receive their value. Projects done, they're ready to move forward. They they can move on. Don't have water, knows what that means. There's a lot of unknown. Us to get where you actually see this. That's all I have to say.
Joe Zavara.
My name is Joe Zavara. Live at one, two, two, six Northwest Fourteenth Street. Uh, these guys are my neighbors. I am in the same port as they are as far as my concerns. Mostly just with the. For us feels like a very rushed, fast process. Centered around a pretty significant potential change for our way of life. When you weigh. Potential of having to move. Or alter the face of our neighborhood just to maintain. It's daunting. And it sounds like this new offer has a lot of potential. But we haven't seen what that is truly and. Make a decision right away seems pretty rushed. I just. Implore that we have enough time to take this to our families and consider what our options really are. And not have to kind of feel like we are unwillingly dragged along the ticking clock over our heads. In the big picture, I mean, what is a couple of weeks? Between council meetings, I I don't think that that's. That big of an ask. Appropriate amount of amount of time. Considering that this is a huge. Kind of a shadow. You're all living with right now. I appreciate that there's investors. Want to make money on their properties and the council members have lives outside of council and lawyers have to be involved in all of that stuff. You guys get to go home and think about other things. This is. Number one on our plates and it's going to be until it's resolved one way or the other. Just urging deliberate deliberate. I mean, on this, I think that's. Very least do for that magnitude of what this really means for us. Thank you for your time.
Daryl Hudson.
Good evening. My name is Daryl Hudson. I'm on eleven, uh, one, one, three, five Northwest Fourteenth Street. I'm also in opposition to this proposed U L I D. Uh, the unjust basis that you have our. Single home is six thousand dollars, but yet on the other properties, it's like. Our hundred thousand to two hundred thousand dollars. You say that we have. Excess land. We do not have excess land. These are three acre plots that we have there. One acre. So your home, projects, driveways. Behind that, you have your well. Well site. According to regulations, we have the well set in the middle. You have a hundred foot radius which eats up one acre acre. One acre is or two, two hundred by two hundred feet is. Nine, two acres. So basically that whole center of our property is our well. That's our protected water. That's what keeps us alive. Find that that's our so-called excess land. In order to put something through there, would we have to go through our water? We cannot do that. Don't want to poison your poison your citizens. So now what do we find ourselves? We're we're paying two hundred thousand dollars for a for a piece of property in the back because it's excess land. It's not excess land to us. What are we put our gardens out there? You know, some of us have have livestock, not excess land. It is our it is our lives is our livelihood. Now, people voted by the citizens of this city to represent the citizens of this city. Not all the special needs of rich and elite that want to come in and exploit the. Goodwill and beauty of our city. Out in their pockets. I don't I don't like that. So I am totally opposed by this. I you know, the numbers, sure, you say that you are you are giving us a better deal. It sounds better on paper, but you know what? My pockets aren't fat. I don't have a lot of money. We don't have two hundred thousand dollars, even if even even in twenty years. We cannot we cannot build on that property. You want to bring sewer down there? There's no water. So basically it don't do us any good. If we pay for, we pay two hundred thousand dollars for the sewer, then what? You want to bring water down later on? Which we, as we all know, the city does not really have that water and on a on a three acre lot, we have our gardens. How much is that going to cost us with the with the rates of the water is in the city? You know, you're basically killing everybody, so. I do not like it and I hope that you will strike this motion or take care of the people. That this city used to be a nice city. You used to be able to drive down the city. You recognize people, you wave to people, everybody. Now everybody honks at you, let you off. This is not what North Bend is about. I've been here for thirty years. This is not the North Bend that it used to be. I got it. Thank you and God bless the city of North Bend.
Wendy Miller.
Hi Wendy Miller. I live at six, eight, one, four Denny Peak Drive Southeast Snoqualmie. This is the first time in eight years that I actually haven't had a statement. I uh. Just want to address some of the things that we've all talked about over the last four years since this U L I D started. This is a petitioned U L I D. Way that that process works is you go and you petition the people, um, majority of the landowners in a particular area. The land area has to be cited upon when you go in and do this petition U L I D. Um, we did that. Unfortunately, you can't carve out islands in this in a U L I D like that, so. Can't take out neighborhoods as there's sewer being put in in the entire area. So this particular area does not have sewer. It was all included into one thing. You were able to go out over four year period of time to go out and get petitions. Um, from the majority of landowners in this area. Um, the last city council meeting, we heard very loud and clear from the residences. Um, and from the city council that the residences needed some help. Um, we partnered with Puget Western to try and alleviate. Um, I think the offer that we've put together and we did get it to my Kenyan yesterday, I think. You all will be seeing it soon. But I believe that the offer is. Any kind of resident, any resident on Fourteenth and on Eighth will not have to pay a dime of the U L I D assessment. As long as they don't sell their property within that twenty years. Or if they do not develop their property that would require them to tap into sewer. So if none of that happens, that none of the residents have to pay a thing. We are going to absorb those costs. If you monetize your property, though, by selling it. You monetize your property by developing a new five bedroom, four bathroom house on it and tear down your two bedroom house. You're creating equity in your home and that's when you need to hook into sewer. Otherwise, these residents are not going to feel any pain whatsoever. Look forward to presenting it to all of you and the residents. I think it's a very generous. And great offer for everyone and I think it's a win-win. Thank you very much.
Your honor, if I can interrupt and perhaps ask Ms. Miller, just to clarify one question. As I.
When you come back to the podium.
As I under expressed my understanding of the agreement, and I think this is critical to the. The single family residential property owners who have just. But to use your examples, then, Ms. Let's say I own one of those properties. I sign your agreement. I own my home for ten years and then I sell it. Person who buys my house has to pay the assessments for the next ten years.
You don't have.
But I do not pay you back.
No. Nobody pays us back up until the point that they monetize their asset.
Same if I just use your other example. I own a two bedroom home. In years I tear it down and buy a bill and build a bigger one. I'm going to pay the assessments for the subsequent ten years, but I don't pay you back. So then if I just sit on it for all twenty, my property for all twenty years, I don't pay a thing.
Correct.
Understood.
And 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 by the way, those aren't lump sum payments that also happen. They're monthly payments. Happen over the rest of the term of the U L I D.
There is no one else on our list here for my in person.
Is there anyone else here in the audience who wanted to speak on the item and didn't sign on the list? And seeing none. Okay, how about online?
Online, we have Megan Lynn.
Megan, now you're just as you said earlier, it's your time.
Hi, my name is Megan Lynn. I work for Perkins Coie and I'm here on behalf of Nintendo. Uh, we appreciate the opportunity to reiterate that Nintendo does not object to formation of the U L I D. Uh, but the amount of Nintendo's potential assessment should be lower because it is governed by a nineteen ninety agreement with the city. Just briefly, Nintendo previously asked for its properties to be excluded from the U L I D because it has no plans to develop. The city responded by relying on documents relating to Nintendo's nineteen ninety building permit. Arguing that Nintendo's participation was already agreed as part of those documents. Nintendo is prepared to honor the agreements, but those documents also contain an agreement. That Nintendo's U L I D assessment is to be pro rata based on its required sewer capacity. This is different from the method currently used in SOVA's analysis. And results in a lower assessment than SOVA's estimate. Nintendo has provided all this information. It's provided it early in the U L I D formation process. In letter submitted on March thirtieth, April fifth and May seventeenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, Nintendo has not heard back from the city and so submits this public comment as a reminder that we are still awaiting a response. And we thank you for the opportunity to comment.
No one else virtual speaking.
Last time for those online. In the chat box or by star nine. Last time, anyone here in the audience? And hearing none. Close the public hearing, seven forty-two. Cue. This time I'll look to Chair Transportation Public Works for a motion.
Thank you, your honor. Motion to approve A B twenty-two dash oh, seven, eight, adopting an ordinance as a first reading. Authorizing formation of closed Meadowbrook sewer U L I D in a form and content. Moved by the city's bond council.
Do I have a second? Motion is second, Mr. Loudonback.
I think we've uh, we've discussed the item. At great length over the course of several meetings, several public hearings. And extensive staff reports. Uh, I would recommend that we move forward and as a due pass on this first reading. And uh, the information that was provided to Mr. Kenyon will be. Obviously distributed to all interested parties and they will have an opportunity to come back at the next iteration. And uh. Serve you again at that.
Staff, too. I'm getting a little feedback, Mr. Loudonback's mic. Except for me, yeah. And I tried that and didn't make a difference. Okay. Uh, Ms. Colen, you were the second. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Um, we have been working on this U L I D for a long time. And it is very difficult and I feel the citizens concerned and I feel like. Puget Western as they've gone above and beyond trying to make it eligible for all, so. I'm hoping when you get the paperwork from them. That you don't have to pay. You can still put your kids through college and won't be. Mental to you.
Mr. Rosen, look at you. I'm. Seeing you have a few words.
I have a few words, you bet. I'll start with, I am. Not thrilled at the piece of this tonight. I believe I got the agreement. Eleven o'clock this morning. And I don't think that presented me with sufficient time or anyone review of the details. Also believe that the residents unfortunately as well have not had sufficient time to look this over. Into my communication with them was ten minutes before the meeting, trying to explain everything I learned today in five minutes. That's I I think that. Have been handled better. I think we could have taken an extra session to address this. With that being said. The agreement that we're looking at has improved significantly. Yes, Ms. Miller, I'm going to say thank you. I know we don't get along, but I appreciate. That you've stepped up and Puget Western the same. We appreciate efforts to address. Concerns of the citizens and I think significant progress was made in this. And for that reason, I do want to see us continue. Want to have conversation and get answers to the public that I couldn't provide on such short notice today. I think we're seeing something that is really moving in the right direction. I do want to thank them for that. Um, what I would like, and I'm going to rattle off a few questions, Mr. Kenyon and Mr. Regos, maybe you could help. Just clarify some things that I think will help the residents in the condensed period of time I've had. I have not been able to fully explain it. We can maybe just, I got about five things. It's simple, but I think it would be helpful for folks to understand. Um, if we can explain, I think we've done, we've touched on sunsetting. So I'll leave that out. Uh, the interest charges and I'll just reiterate and correct me if I'm speaking incorrectly. There's no carrying cost, no interest rates other than the actual interest rate is on the bond. That's correct. Um, it's a real quick side note, bonded municipal bonds, much lower or a lower interest rate typically. Ballpark, I know the markets are changing quite a bit. A week, three, four percent maybe is at a ballpark.
No, I'm not the expert on that. Um, years ago, it was one or two percent for. Projects for very low risk for investors. Maybe Mike, those are maybe Richard knows, but we're somewhere probably in the three, four, five percent areas, Mike.
Yeah, and I'm not I'm not holding you to it. It's we're not talking eight, nine percent. You are a lower interest rate because of municipal bond.
One of the. Important next steps, I mean, assuming this. Reading is adopted and the and the matter moves forward. One of the important next steps is our on council will be meeting with. Underwriter with Richard with on with mayor and trying to determine. Wouldn't have an answer for you.
Okay. That's the stuff we'll get over the next month so we can relay this to the public. What exactly re-triggers a repayment? That is something I did not. Understand, understand that they were talking about, well, if you tear down your home, you build a five bedroom house. You do a significant remodel. Does that trigger? What exactly triggers? And that would be helpful, I think.
And obviously are copies of the the agreement in front of people. And again, I I want to stress, I. I don't speak for Puget Western or government. Agreement that's provided to me has only two triggering events. They're all qualifying events. One is a land use approval, which and has approval of an application for a subdivision and use permit. For other permit redeveloped. The other is the sale. Important thing in this agreement is Ms. Miller. Existing property owner now just holds the. Thing happens except. If they either. At the land use will or sell the house at any point during the. Do not pay. New owner. Forward existing owner.
I think what you wanted to distinguish, Mike, or perhaps one of our land use experts, the the language in there about. Event related to a land use action, what we're what we're talking about.
the event related to a, a land use action, what we're, what we're talking about, there is a land use action that triggers requirement to sewer is that. Yes, that's in the draft agreement right now. Oh, so that kind of covers the idea of if you're doing a small remodel, you're not required to connect sewer. That would be the distinction that I was wanting to make sure that is.
If we can maybe get the language of that broken down to basic English, so everyone can understand exactly what triggers it. That would be helpful just moving forward. Um, if their septic system fails, Mike, correct, then and choose to hook up to sewer, then they would be responsible for the remaining payments.
Yeah, that's, that seems.
That's an option and benefit. Um, those are the questions I wanted to ask publicly tonight. Would appreciate a response at some point in the very near future as to question I can't answer is they have asked, I'm citizens, why they couldn't be carved out? And if we could just bring that, appreciate it doesn't have to be done right here tonight, unless you're comfortable speaking to it. I would like an answer to that. I think that is a valid answer.
That's a, it's a long process to do that. Reason I say that is we have to redesign the system conceptually. So we're reducing a lot of paper. So then we have to reevaluate the construction costs, number one. So that takes, that doesn't take. And we have to reappraise everything, you determine all the special benefits and that does take. So right now the cost, seven and a half million, maybe the cost dropped to seven million by sewer line down that neighborhood. Now you have many properties that are included in Fourteenth Street. Um, so then those are all removed. So everybody else's assessment, well, wouldn't be able to easily remove Eighth Street because that would be a main line. So that's in the, the right of way that goes towards our treatment plan. So it's possible to remove Fourteenth Street. It's not possible really to remove Eighth Street. And it would be a six month, six month assessment to do it because of, have another $25,000 appraisal study. Do, is any of the engineering done first? Then we have to, uh, all the petitions from the property owners. Everybody's going to have a different amount. So we're looking at a delay of a long time. It's not easy. There is no easy carve out.
So an answer I just needed.
Through the mayor, there's really a, a larger issue here and that is that according to the Growth Management Act and according to health and safety regulations, you're supposed to sewer all the areas in the city eventually. And if you comprehensively put a network in where people can hook up, it is the cheapest way to do it. If someone was out in that area and a lot of the homes in Fourteenth are in a industrially zoned area. If anybody later wanted to hook up, they would have to extend a line, should be expensive. And they'd have to hook up on their under a latecomers or some kind of agreement or their share is paid out over time at a low interest rate, one fell swoop with a check. And so what you're trying to do is keep the costs as low as you can. Meet the environmental regulations for not polluting your groundwater and meet your obligations under GMA to sewer your that's, that's, that's all environmentally oriented. And that's really the direction we're given by the state. So yes, there are ways you could probably accommodate smaller areas, but the whole concept of why we're doing this needs to be understood as we maneuver our way through it.
Did I understand significant benefit of this agreement? You had a traditional latecomers agreement hooked up to sewer would trigger a repayment of your portion in full right away, not financed over a number of years.
That's correct.
Something that, you know, okay, thank you. Appreciate your answers and, uh, I have. I, I too have a concern that he met such late. Is working together, but what I've heard of the agreement, um, I, I do want to thank the developers and I think it's a good, uh, in, you know, good way to help out these homeowners and I think it's a, helps them continue to be in their homes. See the benefits of it, would be able to see the other concern and I, I kind of may, I pose that at the finance meeting is, is as we take a look at this. Um, it only has values of those homes gone up, also the cost of this project. So during that, one of the conversations I had is we've got to set price right. Well, in here, it says about seventy, seven point four million. Uh, in, in a bond, I'm assuming that that needs to go up in order to lead this project. Are we going to true that up somehow or at least give that? Cause I think it's important, not only for everybody involved in this, but it's important for us to understand as a city, what the cost of the city so that we can make sure that we those funds set up for, um, our payment forward. So more of a financial forecasting for not only us, but I think everybody else.
Absolutely. Good question, Mr. Regos.
Yeah, it is a good question. Traditionally, the CPI, the cost index can raise two to three percent. Seattle area has year or so, but what we found is that, um, inflationary index in the Seattle area is eight to nine percent area year is the value of land is kind of percent more. So delta between the special benefits created or any preliminary estimate of four point five million dollars done a little over a year ago is, is everything's gone up at higher end is gone up. So we would find that Delta, just a guess, could be in that six million, seven million dollar range. So that's good news.
Yeah, and I understand that, but along with the increased prices, I think that you take a look at the construction uh, area, we've seen a twenty to thirty percent increase, construction side. So that would be important to know. I understand and I truly believe value's still there. I think we need to true up and get a better understanding of what that total cost is that when we're looking out on, we're getting the right view.
Saying I'm not speaking for people tonight and I'm not, but we, we do have Deanna Gregory, our bond counsel on the phone. I think what, uh, would be helpful, maybe that you'd understand for everybody to understand, Jonathan, is that there, there are multiple ways.
I'm Alan, not Jonathan. I'm sorry. You really keep insulting me.
I'm not sure who is more insulted at that.
I know. That's the second time you've done that.
I know. Now I've been here for 26 years too.
Been here for fourteen, so.
But, but typically, a typical way to go about it is the city would issue some short-term financing, bond anticipation notes to pay for the actual action. And when it's true up, when we know it actually longer sponsor issued it.
Yeah, I think, I think you're ultimately missing the point that I'm making here. And the point is, I understand we have an ability to take up that. We know as of now, based upon the numbers, what we set this. I mean, when was this seven million dollar amount determined as the cost of this, this project? And I guess my point is, is we not started more reasonable, knowing that we've probably seen at least a 20% increase. I know that there's been a talk of agent number from seven million, nine million. So I'm trying to get an understanding of, before we get to the point where we know that we're going to have to bond for this, and then there's going to be other things that are going to increase it. We already know there's been a delta from now point. So at what point do we at least estimate that, A, for the citizens, the investment people and for us as a city, be able to, you know, at least look into our future and make sure we've got funds and we are able to allocate that aside, make the payments back.
I agree with what you're, you didn't hear that answer yet. And, and I'm with you as, so I, I believe what you're asking is more of a process and a timing question. I think we've spoken to it a little bit before, but I'd appreciate whether that's Mark, Mr. Kenyon or the bond council we're talking about. When, when we need to do the next estimate before we would bond.
Yeah. So the next step, once the Ulid is formed, we would actually engineer the because right now we don't have any engineering. We don't have survey. We don't have soils information, like good stuff. An engineer be able to estimate us. So what I would do is estimate us in a year or two, because it's going to take engineer the and get it permitted, then get an engineer's estimate one or two years. At point, we haven't spent tons of money. We spent some of the money and see where we're at, see where the economy is, advertise it. Those bids and figure out what that low bid is. Let's do a check-in on the special benefits. Doing it right now, we're just kind of spinning our wheels.
Yeah, I still, I still didn't answer the question when we sat there in finance and said, we had a nine million dollar in there. Should that be the number versus the seven million to start on that? That at least we're coming into some reality when we're stepping into this because we do know it, this it's going to increase. I don't see prices going down. Yes, we may get a favorable bond. We're what, three, four years out, do that. Some of it may come down, but yes, recession a little, but I think there's set costs that have already gotten to that point. I don't see it going below that. I see.
Yeah, I, 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 I think it's trying to be expressed as it's picking when's the time for the most useful information and, and what's being expressed or what I'm hearing is, is that as we're at a conceptual plan, yes, we intuitively expect that prices have gone up, but it's still a guess. And that when we're engineered, that's when we snap. So I think that's what none of us are ever happy with lack of certainty, but that's, that's what we live with.
And I don't think I'm asking for certain. I'm asking us to start, at least put those numbers, knowing that it has gone up some amount. So we have a real instinct.
Uh, did you have anything else? Uh, I believe, Austin, it's up to you.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um. There's different reasons to not support some. One might not support something on the substance of the measure, but it's implementing or the acts that will be done, perhaps the cost. You might disagree on principle. You don't support what's being proposed for some reason. Might disagree on process that we got here. What I'm hearing this evening from council is disagreement on process, not hearing much disagreement on principle. City is a city. He has an obligation as the administrator pointed out to provide infrastructure. It's what cities do and are expected to do and obligated to do under the Growth Management Act that we operate under. Lot of people have worked long and hard, but to get us to this point, I think that's recognized. Don't hear much disagreement on substance. We're here for reasons and process and government is hard work that, you know. And over four years, carve outs are tough. You make choices early on and it's, it's a little bit like baking a cake. By the time you're when the cake out of the oven, if you decide you want three eggs in it, instead of two, you're kind of in a mess and you're going to go back to the beginning and start all over again with a new set of ingredients to get to that same cake. And that's, I think, applicable to this Ulid, if it were to be a set down and started over. I see as something quite remarkable and reflective of this community and the people who live here, most of residents who've come forward to speak and have valid and legitimate concerns. Businesses who have done something quite remarkable. My goodness me, from where we started, look, we have folks saying if you live in your property for 20 years, somebody is, you're, you're receiving an incredible increase in assessed value to that property at no cost to yourself. I've, I've signed me up for that deal. You know, in a heartbeat, folks. Because it's recognized, this whole process that gets us to Ulids and why it's authorized and why this body has the authority to tax y'all is to try and build infrastructure. It's reasonable and makes sense and there has to be mechanism to do that. And the mechanism to do that is low and behold, to tax the people who are going to benefit directly from the installation of that infrastructure. And lots of people, if you put that out there as a general notion and idea, I think you would find broad support. In fact, I object. I think we should fund a lot more things publicly than we do. I don't need to go there. We could spread the assessment across the entire city for improving this sewer. No, we're assigning it to people who are expected to benefit. And there's a group of people now who, if this moves forward in its current form, and if it's true and we let me say that the current process, this is a first reading, in a month from now, we will take this up again and have the same conversation and the opportunity to express our concerns and interest. And hopefully that's enough then for people to better investigate, read the agreement, ask questions of more than generous and remarkable businesses that are offering this partnership. Move this forward, not only in their own interest, but the interest of this community and the people who live here. And I think you might argue landowners who are in fact impacted, there's no question. I will be supporting this. I encourage council to support this. It's time to move forward. It's not the first time that this has come before us. It has been discussed. People are working hard to provide answers. My sense is it is going to move and there is a cost to delay, even a month in these current markets and and there's, there's a cost in staff time and staff morale. There's a cost to the city and financing. There's a cost uncertainty to the businesses that are impacted and anxious to see this go forward and be able to finally plan and see a future that has had this significant uncertainty removed from it. We as a council have the opportunity here tonight to do exactly that. Um, I hope as a month is enough time, but my goodness, this seems to me like a win-win. Delay is not supported by anything I see before me that can hopefully be resolved. And hopefully to increase some level of comfort and support amongst people who will be impacted.
I believe we've heard from everyone before, back to Mr. Chair. I think this is an incredibly um, important evening, something that's been underway for a long time. Uh, so in the, in the process question, again, particularly for the audience to make sure understand the first reading automatically means that therefore that there will be a second reading on the exact same motion on whether to form the Ulid or not. We're, again, uh, night's anticipation is, is that if this moves forward, there'll be, uh, an entire month where it would come before council. All they vote this evening does not necessarily reflect how they may vote in the final. Um, it is, it is one of keeping, moving forward in the process and we've got the we will be here again and it will be council's choice at that time, whether or not to vote, uh, that evening or not. Sure and share that with you. I, I don't want you to make the motion. The motion is on the table. I'm just simply asking or is, and, and this is a question for anyone. Believe we've heard from everyone. Are we ready to vote?
Ready to vote. I'll fill that out.
So with that, um, and we have a motion to approve AB twenty-two dash zero seven eight. Adopting an ordinance, they first reading, authorizing the formation of the proposed Meadowbrook sewer Ulid. A form and content moved by the city's bond council. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Supposed? None, motion carries, it is unanimous. Thank you, council for that. Appreciate that. We will see this item again in about a month. Um, with that, we will move on to agenda item number five, AB twenty-two dash zero seven nine. This is also a public hearing, continued, resolution, adopting the six-year EIP eight, three, twenty twenty-eight. Is Mr. Moore with us or you taking this tonight?
No, I'll be a pinch hitting for Tom tonight.
All right, Mr. Regos, it's all yours.
Hey, Rob. So, um, going back in time a month ago to May 17th, when we gave the first reading of our six-year TIP, we do this every year. We're very familiar with it. We've got a great list of capital projects, transportation capital projects involve non-motorized and motorized projects. Moving this TIP gets us ready for grants from state. We need these grants from Puget Sound Regional Council, transportation or the state and HWA. Uh, because we approve our TIP every year, that puts us at a competitive advantage at securing grants some of the other cities near. And some of the changes of this year, TIP, just to quickly go over those are splitting the South Fork Avenue bypass, the North Bend Way, Eighth Street roundabout into two separate projects. You've added a sidewalk on the north side of 140th Street near the Wood River neighborhood. You've created an estrian bridge over the South Fork Snoqualmie River near the wastewater treatment. You have raised in priority a parking shoulder near Seiview. We have lowered in priority a roundabout. That's our 202 at Streets. So I won't list all the many benefits or TIP. I recommend the TIP be passed as a reading.
So to the audience again, reminder, this is a public hearing, so we will go back, look, see if we have any comment in the public, yeah, this evening before we close the public hearing. Look first again to those here in council chambers, then we'll go online. Who are online and wish to speak to this item is indicated in the chat box or by star nine on your phone. Is there anyone here in council chambers that wishes to speak? Being none. Do you have anyone online?
No virtual participants.
Very much. We will close the public hearing at 8:11. And Ms. Loudback, I think we're back to you again, sir.
Two for two. A motion to approve AB 22-079, a resolution adopting the six year T transportation improvement plan 2023 through 2028 as a final reading.
I have a motion, do I have a second? Second, you, Mr. Loudback.
Mark highlighted this. We've been over the, the plan before as a group, and I think it's a good plan going forward. It is our principal guiding roadmap or applying for grants. And we've taken a good deal of time. Tom Moore particularly has done an excellent job in moving forward these projects and reallocating the prioritization. And it is a living document because we do revisit it every year. And I think this is a, a good plan, and I would recommend it to pass.
Ms. Colan, did you have anything to add? So. None. The motion before you is to approve AB 22-079, a resolution adopting six year transportation improvement plan for 2023 to 2028. It's a final reading. One favor?
Aye.
Me opposed. Carries and it is unanimous. Thank you, council. And with that, we will move to mayor, council, administrator, concerns and initiatives. I'm going to start with Mr. Pot Health.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Ms. Colan.
I really enjoy this weather and I hope we all.
With that. Russel.
I enjoyed the national holiday yesterday and just want to acknowledge Juneteenth as receiving recognition and hopefully embrace by community and our society writ large.
Back.
Just wanted to say thank you to everybody tonight for your input from the audience and virtually and from the council for the insightful questions and particularly to the petitioners. We stepped forward with an outstanding and, in my opinion, an unprecedented agreement that is going to help move this forward. And I'm really looking forward to this finally, finally being formed going forward. One other thing, this is the last meeting that we are going to have prior to the July Fourth holiday, and I would ask everybody to be very cognizant, even though we have had unprecedented amount of precipitation for the last yawn, I would suggest that there is always a certain element of risk and that if you're going to participate with fireworks, please, please, please exercise extreme caution and be cognizant of not only your own personal safety, but that of your neighbors. And that's it, Your Honor.
You, Mr. Rosen.
Just wanted to thank all the folks who came by tonight and expressed their thoughts and concerns. Have another month to continue to address them, and I'm sure we will. That is all.
Thank you all for your comments tonight. I, I'm going to keep mine very brief as well. I'm open on the fireworks and I also saw an article about a child who had, his entire hand blown off. So be very dangerous. On a much more positive note, I wanted to share I, two, two things I did in this last week that were very uplifting. Some council members have taken part in some of these as well. Yesterday, we did a ribbon cutting for a Rett coffee house. Was, it was fun to be out there. This is the new coffee house inside of the Proski. So another business that is now inhabiting the old city hall, just such a cool thing to see that that building come back to life in a new way. And, and along with that, one of the things that struck me was the synergy among a large group of young, new business owners in town and, and how they support each other. And that was, that was the conversation, how they go from business to business, whether it's to volition and to one thing or another. And it was just really neat to listen to them and watch them in conversation. Second thing that I took part in this last Friday was I had the pleasure of being part of the crew, the of North Bend employees who spent a day Habitat for Humanity build. And I got to meet one of the upcoming, our upcoming residents there as well. It's coming along very nicely. I was, I was seen for all of the talent that I have. Apparently I was assigned a broom and did a lot of sweeping, but it's, it's a cool build. It's going to be a great project and it's a really neat thing to be involved with. I know a lot of our staff got a big boost out of being involved in that. I know some of our council members again took a piece of that and it's just really cool. Few other minor things here, well, not so minor. Reminder to all that the North Bend, North Bend Downtown Block Party will take place on Saturday, July 16th from noon to 11:00 PM. It's free event includes music, performances, Kid Zone, food and locally sourced beer and wine garden. I know more about the event, including the music lineup, features the headliner, say this in public, bells, bells. Please visit the community calendar on the city website. Finally, regarding another comment that was made regarding, even though we've had a lot of rain, the seasonal moratorium on outdoor burning is now in effect, started June 15th. I think it runs through September 30th. In addition, information on the annual burn ban, news section on the city website also features wildfire risk reduction tips for those that are interested. Finally, council is a reminder, we are canceling the July 5th city council meeting. We will see you in a month. It's all, a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.